Take your time. I don't want to. I get freaked out with all these papers. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, Monday, March 21, 2002. I will wait a motion to suspend the non-public until the end of the evening.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. And we will need a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackern?
Yes.
Unanimous?
And now, in something that I still don't quite understand, we will require a roll call of attendance.
Mayor McCackern?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
Here.
Counselor Blaylock?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
And before we stand for the pledge of allegiance, I would like to thank everyone who's reached out with thoughts on the Ukrainian people, asking what it is we can do as a city. It's something that, again, the horrors bestowed upon their country by a war of choice is something I hope we never have to see in our lifetime. And I can only ask that, as we stand and say this pledge of allegiance, that we think of the costs that people are willing to put forth in order to defend the freedom of self-determination in their country. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it serves, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And speaking of independence and the fight for freedom, we have with us this evening a vocal performance by the children of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. If they could come in now, I'm going to read a proclamation as they do and get set up. It's a longer proclamation, but well worth. Whereas the founding fathers of America drew direct inspiration from the ideals and practices of ancient Greece when forming the world's first modern democracy and framing the Constitution that provides that guidance by which we live. And whereas, 201 years ago, inspired by the same ideals of liberty, self-governance, and passionate belief in democracy that sparked the American Revolution, the people of Greece declared their independence from the Ottoman Empire. Now, every March 25th marks Greek Independence Day, a celebration of the history and values that unites the United States of America and the Hellenic People Republic, a crucial NATO ally and friend of the U.S. And whereas, today Greeks around the world gather on Greek Independence Day to reflect with pride and passion on the liberation of their home nation and the resolute actions of their forebears. And whereas Portsmouth has a thriving Greek community, many of whom are parishioners of the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church, which celebrated its 90th anniversary in 2021, the founding congregation of only 25 men and three women arrived from Greece with great dreams and determination and established the lasting legacy of hard work and generosity. St. Nicholas is now flourishing an active home of worship and culture to over 250 families. It is fittingly located on Andrew Jarvis Drive, an homage to the Greek-American businessman and politician who served as mayor of Portsmouth from 1958 to 1959. And whereas, each year, the St. Nicholas community proudly leads Portsmouth into celebration of Greek Independence Day, residents, young and old, gather to enjoy traditional dancing, poetry, costumes, speeches, and food in recognition of the influence and contributions the Greek community has made to New Hampshire. And whereas the global pandemic impacted the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church's 90th anniversary festivities, so 2020, 2022, it's getting tough there, will see a continuation of the celebration with the return of the St. Nicholas Greek Festival on June 24th and 25th. It will be a wonderful showcase of ethnic pride and invitation for all community members to be Greek for a day. Now, therefore, I, Deglin McCackern, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the city council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2022, as Greek Independence Day, and call upon the residents of Portsmouth to join in observation and celebration, given with my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on this 21st day of March 2022. Thank you. And I would also like to note, and Joanna Deemer was nice enough to write a little note reminding me of that on the top of this, that we will be lighting the memorial bridge in honor of the, with the national colors of Greece, blue and white, over the weekend. So when you look to the bridge, you will see the Greek colors in honor of your independence. May it be a reminder of everyone's struggle to be free. So now, I hear that there's some kids that are going to, they look pretty cool, are going to come up and sing for the whole city council, and then stick around till about midnight when we usually finish up. No, they're going to go home. Okay, they're going to go home right after singing. But would you please come up and sing to all of us? All right, why don't we give them a round of applause today?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good trade. Good trade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're so cute.
Snack for non-public.
It seems as though many were here in attendance to watch the singing. So we have, next up is the acceptance of minutes, and there are none for this evening. So on to the recognition and volunteer committee reports. We have first a recognition for the fire event on February 25, 2022, by Jason and Tristan. Jason and Tristan, are you here in the audience this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I know that Assistant Fire Chief Bill McQuillan is here.
Well, I'm going to read out what, in case, let's see. Is it possible to, it seems it would lose a little bit of the impact if they are not here to receive it.
We could postpone that.
Could we postpone it to the next, postpone it to the next meeting? And want to highlight, but the TL, or the thing that I learned when reading it is baking soda puts out fires, something that a 12-year-old knew, and maybe I knew it when I was 12, but I forgot about it. So if there's any grease fires out there, I don't want that to wait for two weeks. Use baking soda on them. So we will celebrate Jason and Tristan in two weeks. So next up is the recognition of John Kavanaugh for his efforts in raising awareness of the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. I know that John is within, he's here with us tonight and had been on, I think he signed up for a public comment, but I would ask to suspend the rules and bring John to say a few words, and then I had a few words to say in response to that.
Second.
John, would you mind coming up and speaking a few words on the work that you're doing? That's a great place. There's a microphone right there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and the city council for the invitation. Very happy to be back in Portsmouth, my home. Originally from Bedford, but Portsmouth has been my New Hampshire base of operations for the past 20 or 30 years. Do feel a little like Rip Van Winkle, because when I was here and was active in politics, Mayor Foley was in your seat and worked together on a lot of good projects for the city of Portsmouth, which I see manifesting all about when I walk around downtown and throughout the community. But I very much appreciate the recognition, and, but more importantly, what I would like to encourage is a focused discussion, not, I understand tonight is not the venue, but perhaps a focused discussion on some very specific ideas as to how the city, official city, can play a role in responding to the Ukraine humanitarian crisis. There's also a lot of opportunities for the citizens of Portsmouth to play a role. Individuals and businesses have stepped up, and that's sort of spontaneously happening, and it's a wonderful thing. But I do have some very specific ideas about how the city might be able to be engaged, and I'm happy to meet in a different venue, perhaps in a private session, to articulate some of those.
We don't have to discuss all of them right here tonight, but the reason that I asked you to come and the reason why I'm going to give you this key is that as soon as John made it out of Ukraine and safely back to the United States and then to Portsmouth, his first thoughts were how does he rally the support of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and citizens concerned at large in helping coordinate efforts to support the refugees, but also those that are still in Ukraine, as I understand your partner is to this day. So our motto in Portsmouth, and it came from a leaflet in 1923, was, is, the city of the open door. It's fitting, I think, for this. Doors are easy to close, especially in times of trouble, in times of trepidation. When things look rough, it's easy to close your door to those situations. But John has decided that as soon as getting home, his idea was how does he open more doors, and how does he convince other people to keep their doors open in what will be a, either way, if the war ends tomorrow, it's still a horrific event that has displaced, you know, nearly 10 million people at this point. So I appreciate, the city of Portsmouth appreciates your work, and I'm going to come give you this coin and let it be the first of many conversations we have on helping the Ukrainian people.
Right on, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. And now on to public comment. Again, rules, we would like to keep it to three minutes. Portsmouth residents, we ask you to line up first, and I will go down the list. And then if you are on Zoom, you have, say, three more minutes to raise your hand on Zoom, and then we'll cap it there. So first up, we have Mary Ann Janek. Please approach. And when you get here, just state your name and your address for the record. You have, as your topic, McNab Project Challenges Daniel Street Closure and Impact on Small Business. Floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor McCackern, city council members and city staff. My name is Mary Ann Janek. I live at 21 Burkitt Street in Portsmouth. I'm an owner of a small business downtown called Kelly B., located at 21 Daniel Street across from Moe's. I opened my retail business on May 15th last year. Moving in, I knew a large development project next door would impact a new business, but I had no idea how much and for how long. I will share two key challenges recommending solutions. First, I would like to acknowledge my gratitude to the city staff for their empathy and their efforts to help me through this tough time, resolving issues as best as they can. The first issue is communications. Although the point of contact for the abutters is Christine LeBlanc, the CFO at McNab, this process is not effective, not necessarily a fault of her own. The problems are a lack of clear ownership for issues, causing delays, and very little resolution. We need a third party to help resolve these issues. Additionally, we are not getting proactive notifications in a way that is effective. We get technical information that is not actionable. We need to understand what is coming so we can adapt appropriately. I recommend a weekly impact review to allow us to ask clarifying questions and prepare accordingly. The second issue is the safe passage of pedestrians, tourists, and residents that want to pass my storefront and walk safely onto Daniel Street. This has been an issue from the beginning and continues today. I've been blocked by various massive construction objects, cars, trucks, trash bins, piles of dirt, granite blocks, and more, as you will see in the photos that I have submitted. I am even more concerned as we face the Daniel Street reconstruction project. I'm asking for two things. The first is a protected throughway. People must be able to safely pass my storefront. Cars and trucks constantly block this unfinished portion where the sidewalk ends and don't allow walkers to safely pass. This is a big issue for my business. Regarding the Daniel Street reconstruction site, we need proper signage with all businesses listed that says "open during construction." Establishing an abutters committee that can work with the city and the developer would allow for more dialogue, input, and collaboration. This is a complex, huge project. In a very small space, the city may not have had ideal policies in place. Therefore, many challenges have arisen. We need to address forthcoming challenges with clear two-way communication. I'm a proponent of growth, and I know construction is messy. I believe that with a third-party resolution contact, improved impact review meeting, a butters committee, and protected passageways in front of all stores, and signage for Daniel Street construction can work together to provide the lowest negative impact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And I appreciate future dialogue.
That was eloquent. We appreciate that we hold clapping on any issue in city council chambers. Next up, we have John. You're on here. Do you want to come up and say anything else, or we'll carry that over to the more private sessions?
I think it's best to start with the private.
Okay, sounds great. Next up, we have Rick Beckstead on the topic of demolition committee.
Good evening, Rick Beckstead, 1395 Isenden Street. Just last week, I was kind of reminded of something that kind of left off. April 29th of 2021 was the last time that our demolition committee had gathered. There were some strong recommendations, and from that point on, we have heard nothing. Last week, I was made aware, one at the BOA level and then one at the planning board level, that we have two buildings that are to be demoed. One of them is in downtown Portsmouth, a stone throw away from the North Church, and the other one is actually on Essex, just a stone throw away from my house. When that committee met, it was with Counselor Monroe. We had our Robert Marsilia that was on there, Nick Cracknell, Barbara Ward, and John Wykoff. And the strong recommendations were, after a house was torn down on Aldridge, and it was done inadvertently with total disregard to what we had had. During that meeting, there were recommendations made to make it stricter. I believe there was only one that was on there of not restricting it. Restricting it would have been adding up to 180-day waiting period before somebody would be allowed. It is the right of a property owner to be able to do things to the home. I get that. But what ends up happening is, and I'll use mine for example, that's down the road, so it's a one-and-a-half-story building down the road from my house, and there basically is a is a two-and-a-half, almost a three-story building that will replace it. Now, most people say, well, they're making more room. Well, the problem with that is if you pay $700,000 for a building in Portsmouth and you knock it down, you're basically buying that land and then the permission to be able to tear it down. Once that is done, it offsets as far as the land value. So it starts over again. And as we've repeatedly seen this, year after year, it redefines our neighborhoods. It actually raises the land value of those neighborhoods and inadvertently, it ends up costing everyone more money. Yep, it's valued at more money, but everyone's taxes around it go up. So I would just go and ask that the mayor, along working with Counselor Monroe, if you're still in that position, I mean, now you're a counselor, so I think a planning board representative would have to go on there, but basically be able to see that through. I talked with Attorney Sullivan this afternoon and it basically would become an ordinance. So the council would have to go and do a first reading. The recommendations are there. I'm sure Counselor Monroe, who agreed with all of the recommendations at that time, to stiffen those to prevent that type of action from happening. It deters. It doesn't eliminate it from happening, but it deters, it would make people think... Redefining our neighborhoods is key to everything. Once you redefine those, I've been a part of a lot of actions that have taken place over the years, one of them down the road from Mayor McHeckern's, and it got nasty. Promises were made and then not kept. It creates a lot of chaos and it's something I think that we really want to go and avoid. So if we are crystal clear in deterring, I think it will actually make it a little easier. So again, thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Arthur Claw on the ethics can be simple.
Good evening, Arthur Claw, 431 Pleasant Street. About a month ago, this council voted to make Portsmouth the city of the blocked doorway. This city council ignored the 85% of the downtown businesses, which are not restaurants, and it decided to make Portsmouth's downtown into an outdoor eating extravaganza at the cost of businesses being able to have customers that can go downtown and park. If you're going to get your sewing machine repaired, are you going to go to the downtown, to the one store downtown that repairs it with no parking around? Or are you going to probably take it somewhere else? This city has put itself into a legal predicament by choosing one industry over another and people knew that it was wrong. Prior to the February 22 vote, in response to a long-term downtown retailer, John Tabor assured him by email, Jo Kelly should recuse herself and I would bet Sullivan has advised her on this. I've heard multiple people who are against the ethics complaint that I put in still say that there was a conflict of interest. Here's the conflict of interest. You own a business, it sells food, it's a restaurant, you're renting out the city property, you're voting for paying less than what the city manager said, the taxpayers are paying the rent essentially because you've taken a discount. That's a conflict of interest. You're voting in your own interest and I challenge you to have the moral courage to stand up, and I'm talking to the whole council now, and reverse your vote on outdoor dining. 300 parking spaces down in the city parking garage and you think that if you give somebody a low-rent loading zone, that that's not going to affect the store that's immediately in front of it? Businesses are frightened that they're going to out of business and you guys just want to party. You want a beer, you want to do your restaurant challenge, you want your comp meals, whatever. But you are not honoring the downtown business people and they are afraid. I talked with them. I talked with a number of them. They're afraid to speak out. Some of them did, but you didn't listen. They're afraid to speak out because they believe that the city is going to just use punitive measures like they have in the past by doing over inspections or denying permits, et cetera. This council is, has put the city at risk of losing businesses and being sued. I challenge you to reverse that vote, make the city open for everybody, stop favoring just the restaurants.
Thank you, Arthur. Next up is Mr. Brighton as a follow-up listed as the topic.
Mark Brighton, South Mill Street. I'd like to say, point out that the mayor and the city attorney or whoever will do this review of the complaint are supposed to act more like a grand jury than a judge and jury. The ordinance reads, "If either the mayor or city attorney feels the issue has substance, then the mayor shall refer the matter to the board." It says "shall refer" and it says substantive, substance. If it has substance, that means that it has weight. And nothing could be clearer in this issue than, is there a conflict of interest? It needs to go to the, yeah, Ethics Board and let them make a determination. If it comes back, you know, that they find, they have a finding of wrongdoing, then at that point, the city council can take in any mitigating circumstances. Mr. Claw and I are not looking for heads-on pikes. Big fat apologies would go very nicely and go a long way. Once upon a time, the city attorney would give a nice presentation on what a conflict of interest was. In front of the planning board, he once said, I believe it was in 2016, maybe October, "You should all be purer than Caesar's wife." If you have to ask yourself, "Should I appear or not appear? Should I recuse myself or not recuse myself?" My advice is, don't vote. The last part honors exact words, but I kept on going too long, Bob, so... He's also stated on numerous occasions that ultimately, the decision to vote is up to the individual. No matter what advice they get, it is up to the individual. They are responsible for their decisions. It's that simple. And again, big fat apologies would go a long way.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, we have Josh Denton. As a reminder, any counselor can also enjoy speaking from the lectern as a public comment. You must state your name and address.
Josh Denton, 110 Brewery Lane, apartment 312. I'm going to speak briefly as the commander of VFW Post 168. In your packet is an invitation to the Welcome Home End of the Iraq War Parade, scheduled for Sunday, May 1st at 10 o'clock in the morning. A similar invitation went out to all of our elected officials at both the state and federal level. This is the last Sunday of spring break, so I totally understand if people cannot attend. I want to extend the invitation to anyone watching tonight, especially to any veterans. So although it is marking the end of the Afghanistan War, America's longest conflict, it's a welcome home parade. So it's for any veteran to attend. I'll go over the basics of the parade. We had a subcommittee meeting this afternoon to flush out some more details, but it's forming up at Prescott Park by the Emerson Hove Fountain, the same namesake as the post. It's going to go on a .7-mile loop downtown. It's going to go under the bridge, down Daniel to Market Square. That's where we're going to ask any elected officials who want to observe to stand. Then we'll make a left, go down Pleasant, make a left on, go down State Street, and then we're going to end at the park itself and we're going to have a small cookout where anyone is invited. The event itself, it's a nonpartisan, nonpolitical event, so we're making clear upfront that we don't want any flags that are not authorized, like an American flag or a POW flag, to participate. And we're looking forward to anyone who is able to attend, but there's no public speaking, although anyone who does go to the cookout could feel free to talk to whoever else is there. Two more things I want to hit on, both as the commander of the VFW. First is the Disabled Veterans Tax Credit. This is for any veteran who's watching who has not applied to the VA for benefits. Organizations like the VFW are here to help you apply to the VA, so please feel free to reach out. And the second one in the packet is an application from Lauralee Godfrey. She's actually the Post's nominee for a Eagle Scout of the Year program, where she possibly gets a $5,000 scholarship. She's applying to the Sustainability Committee. I'm the longest-serving non-continuous member of the Sustainability Committee, excluding the current chair, and she's applied to that committee and I think she would do a wonderful job on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, both to your service to Portsmouth and to your country. Next up, we have Esther Kennedy with the topic of, I think it says, God Knows. Is that what it says?
I was being late coming, so I had someone sign me up.
Wow.
You, Mr. Brighton.
You certainly are, even now.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. I come before you tonight because tonight you have a really important decision to make and maybe you've already made it. I was very active in getting an audit committee put together. And that committee, one of the reasons I spent time and energy on it was because it was time for a change. We have the same auditor for 28 years. Now, I do not know if there has been anyone that applied, but I know and have read thoroughly numerous times the RFP. I was active when there was public meetings and I was active when I was a counselor on that committee. I ask you, the one thing, the most important thing a counselor does, and I heard this from numerous past counselors, is the budget and the finances for our city. I ask you to take that serious. It is time for a change. I don't care how you get there. I don't care what happens, but we need a new audit committee, or I mean, an audit to take place. And you need a new group to do it. 28 years is too long. Actually, it would be 27, given the one year that they probably should have done it, which was the first year. Second, I want to bring to your attention that it's interesting to me that some people still think that I'm a counselor and call me. For some reason, and I encourage you to change this, people are scared of retribution from the city to come and speak. And I do not know exactly why. I have felt that I have not been pondered upon because I speak out a lot, but our downtown businesses have a story to tell and they do not feel that they can tell it, given the vote that took place last Monday night. And as a business owner myself in the city, I think people feel comfortable coming and stopping in and telling me. But the small businesses that are not restaurants do not feel they were heard. So I come before you and ask you to listen to them. I have said all along that we do not do enough in our city for small businesses. And actually, maybe it's time to start a small business group. We take care of the big businesses, we take care of the big developers, but we don't do enough for small businesses. I would ask this council, given the number of small businesses sitting up there, that you take action on this and start a group for small businesses and let them be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, we have Petra Huda on meeting notices.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Petra Huda, 280 South Street. Tonight, I'd like to provide you some information. First of all, I'm going to speak to this. Oh, as you all know, I wrote to you last week and requested the subject for the non-public meeting. When I did that, I hadn't received a response and I understood why. So my question is, and Mayor can see what I'm saying if he follows down, and tonight's meeting is also noted incorrectly. There is no RSA 91A31D. It goes to C. So when I was researching all of this, I went back quite a bit and I found that there were eight meetings that were incorrectly notified. I do not know what the ramifications of this is, but I'm asking you to please correct it. And if possible, at all times for transparency, it would be really nice if you could give the public a subject on this. Also, I'd like to speak on the announcement of the auditor tonight. I am hoping, just like Counselor Kennedy, I put in a lot of time on that and I am really hoping that we can move forward with a new auditor after 28 years. I had left the audit committee after December and had followed up as well as I could with public sessions, but when it went into deliberation, after proposals were received, the public was not invited. So I have high hopes that you will make the right decision when it comes to selecting the new auditor. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. The sections here are Section 2, and that is L, and then Section 1, which is D. So there's two listed there, but we will clarify that in a memo to be released. Next up, we have Paige Trace, same idea, city of Portsmouth. Listen, God knows is an all-encompassing catch-all.
Very good thing. And it's good to start out with some humor and actually, that is RSA 91-A1D that's listed and there is no 1D for clarification. 1 goes up to C and not to D, and I think that's what past Counselor Huda was trying to say to you, because I noticed it also. So ladies and gentlemen, Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. First, this is a laundry list of little things, hopefully. City Manager, you look like you've got to be very tired of having to constantly provide everyone with everything without people helping you or questioning sometimes. And I would remind everyone here that you work for the residents. City Manager and the city attorney work for you. But I repeat, you all work for not just me, but 22,000 other people in this city. So I think the frustration that you're hearing is that in your efforts to have a great energized city during the summer, you're neglecting a silent portion of the city and it's hurting them. It's really hurting the business owners. They don't get to have their parking space in front of their shop anymore because somebody's called dibs on that space for X amount of money. And City Manager, I applaud you because you suggested, I believe, $5,700 per spot. And I think that was reasonable. I would remind all of you that restaurant owners, business owners, were capable of ARPA, Main Street, and PPP at least once, if not twice, on the PPP funds. You can go online, it's public. It's obscene, the amount of money that was handed out. And the business owners, to my understanding, didn't get quite the same ability to have that money. Attorney Sullivan, multiple times when I was a counselor, I asked you, sir, one question and another because it was the right thing to do. And I'd come up and I'd say, "I'm not really sure if I have a conflict on the HDC tonight, but please help me." Never once did he say to me, "You should vote this way." And the same thing on the city council. He would say to me, "If you question, if you have a question, it says to you, do not vote. Abstain from voting." And that's what I hope you will all do from now on because I don't think it's pleasant and I think that we need to remember we work for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. All right. That is the end of in-person and...
One hand, Mayor.
One hand. Okay, we'll hear from... We'll hear from Shelley Saunders. Shelley, will you please state your name and your address? And then you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Shelley Saunders, 15 Oak Street. I'm just calling in to support Speaker Petra Huda and Esther Kennedy in finding a replacement for the auditing committee that we've had for 28 years. I would hope that 28 years is enough, and I would hope that you are going to pursue finding a new and fresh audit committee, and I support that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Shelley. All right. With that, we will move on from public comment to public hearings and vote on ordinances and/or resolutions. The first of which is... Oh, that's right. Okay. Slight audible, since we have Roseanne here, our city assessor, and she has a presentation on the statistical revaluation. We will move to suspend the rules and move up Roseanne to deliver her presentation before the public hearing adoption of the resolutions.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. We're in the process of trying to bring it up for folks tuning in.
I was impressed that we got all of that figured out before you got that figured out in terms of votes.
I forgot to send it to the most important person, the presenter.
We're close.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Tonight, I just would like to give you some information on the upcoming 2022 statistical revaluation. I know this is a lot of councillors' first time going through a revaluation, so I just wanted to go over some key aspects. And as everyone knows, I'm Roseanne Lund, the city assessor. The next slide. So tonight, I'd like to go over what a statistical revaluation is versus a partial revaluation, revaluation standards, definition of market value, what market data that I currently do have that I can share with you, the revaluation team, who will be conducting, who will be monitoring, and who will be supervising, the timeline, and then any questions that you might have at the end. There are several types of revaluations, but the two the City of Portsmouth utilizes the most are statistical revaluation and a partial update, which is also considered a revaluation. A statistical revaluation was last completed in 2019. This revaluation means the process of a revaluation of all taxable and non-taxable properties in a municipality using existing property data to arrive at full and true value as of April 1st. A partial update, which our last one was completed in 2017, means the process of analyzing market sales throughout the entire municipality to identify and, if necessary, implement needed value changes to affected areas or classes of property, bring those properties to the municipality's general level of assessment, utilizing the existing base tax year, and providing an addendum to the existing U.S.P.A.T. compliant report. In short, that means to bring everybody up to the current level of assessment. So if my current level assessment was 85% during a partial update, and if certain classes of properties were below or above that 85%, I would bring them up or down to that current level of assessment. Whereas during a statistical revaluation, I bring everybody closer to market value, which is 100% of value. Thank you. Revaluation standards were adopted by the New Hampshire Assessing Standards Board. This was a result of the Sorrell decision a long time ago from the City of Portsmouth challenging how assessments were arrived within the state of New Hampshire. The level of assessment, which is the overall median ratio of a municipality, should fall between 90 and 110%. This is during a statistical revaluation. This measures how close assessed values are to market value. The DRA looks at three strata, which are property types, which are improved residential, including four families, improved non-residential, which are commercial, and unimproved property, which is vacant land. The median ratio of each group should be within 5% of the overall median ratio. This measures proportionality. Uniformity of assessment, which is the coefficient of dispersion, is no greater than 20%. This actually is how close all of our assessments are within market value to one another. So residential properties, they like to fall between 5 and 15% of each other of the median ratio. Income properties, 5 to 20%. And other properties, between 5 and 20%, which would be your vacant land. And I think the first one, residential properties, is 5 to 15%. I think I said 20. They also look at what's called the price-related differential, which measures if lower-end properties are being valued disproportionately to higher-end properties or vice versa. They call this the PRD, which should fall between 98 and 103. So the State of New Hampshire Assessing Standards Board adopted IAAO standards of acceptable appraisal practices and utilizes these standards to determine acceptable ranges of a municipality's level of assessment and uniformity of assessment, which is that 90 to 110% during a statistical revaluation, that COD that I just talked about and the price-related differential. The New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration utilizes these standards established by the ASB to analyze and measure mass appraisal performance and reports the results to the municipality and the Assessing Standards Board. So the City of Portsmouth is obligated to meet these standards during revaluation. The city will also monitor these standards during this revaluation with help from Whitney Consulting to assure that the above standards are adhered to. Next slide. How is market value determined? Market value is the price a buyer of property willing but not obligated to buy, and a seller of property willing but not obligated to sell would agree on after taking into consideration all uses to which the property is adapted and might be reasoned, in reason be applied. There's lots of definitions of market value, this is just one of them, but they all mean the same thing, a willing buyer and a willing seller with undue influences conducting and coming together in a sale. There are three approaches to value. The sales approach, which uses comparable sales of properties. We are going to use sales for this revaluation from April 1st, 2021, for residential properties, and we'll go back two years for commercial properties, so April 1st, 2020. And we also look at the income approach. Next slide. So I just wanted to give you some information about what's been going on in the market since COVID or before COVID. So in this slide, which I got from the New England Real Estate Network, shows supply and demand. The green shows supply, and the blue shows demand. So as you can see from this slide, in 2019, there was plenty of supply, which is in the green, and there was still the same amount of demand, but there was more supply, the prices of properties were lower. And as you can see, going October 21, there's no supply and still the same demand, which is causing the real estate market to become very expensive within the city and throughout the state of New Hampshire and throughout the country. Next slide. I pulled data from the New England Real Estate Network to try and show what residential properties were doing within the city. And I went back to 2018, and I got the median sale prices of residential properties. As you can see, these sale prices have been going up substantially. Since 2019 to 2021, there has been at least, I think it's been about a 15 to 20% increase. And you can see even for the first two months of 2022, it's equal to the full year of 2020. If you look at the median sale prices of single-family homes, which is the top chart, you can see that that has been going up. So today, the median sale price within the City of Portsmouth is $693,000 for a single-family home. The last time we did a revaluation, it was around $465,000. The median sale price for condominiums has increased, but not as fast as single-family homes. And then if you look at the median sale price of mobile homes, it has increased also, but not as fast as single-family homes. Next slide. I also wanted to get an indication of what's been going on in the commercial market. I looked at the office market, which we had data for, and we looked at the industrial market. As you can see with the office market since COVID, in 2019, there was very low vacancy rates. In 2020 and 2021, higher vacancy rates, less demand for office market, in the office market. And you can see by the rents, which is the chart to the right, that they have been basically level, which is causing no increase in the office market demand or in the value of the office market. Next slide. So if you look at the industrial markets, totally the opposite. If you look at the vacancy at the bottom of the chart to the left, you'll see that there's, the vacancy rates have been going down, which means there's high demand for the industrial properties. And then to the chart to the right, you can see that the rents have been going pretty high, from $6, 2020, to about $11 in 2021. So high demand for these industrial properties, but we have very limited supply, causing these prices to increase. So our office market is not going to be the same as it once was for this revaluation. These rents have been staying pretty steady, which means that the values of these properties will not be increasing like they had in years past. Next slide. So conducting the revaluation will be Vision Government Solutions and Mike Torello. He's been doing our revaluations from the City of Portsmouth for the past five years, very familiar with Portsmouth, and we work very well with one another. Utility property we'll be looking at with Brian Fogg. We have used him in the past to revalue our properties within the city. And I'll be supervising the revaluation along with Whitney Consulting, who will be helping me go over everything that is presented to the city council in the future, and also to look at the values going forward that will be sent to the public, the taxpayers. Next slide. So this is our tentative timeline. We've had a startup meeting just with Vision. We will be having another startup meeting with the Department of Revenue at a later date. Right now, we're in the sales review process, looking at commercial and residential properties and analyzing these sales to determine where they're falling in comparison to the current market. I'm holding a presentation to you tonight. We'll be reviewing, field reviewing, all these sales and all the properties that will be going through this process in the revaluation, which will be starting in June 2022. This will be ongoing until around August, when we send out preliminary values. We'd like to hold another work session with the city council before preliminary assessments are sent out to show you our analysis and what will be affected and what neighborhoods will be affected, and how much property values will be increasing throughout the city. After that, we'll be sending notices to taxpayers on their assessments. We'll be holding hearings starting sometime around August through September. Final notices will be sent out if there's any changes to preliminary values the week of September 26. I'll be doing the MS-1, which is the valuation to the state of New Hampshire to come up with the tax rate for the City of Portsmouth based on our new values. The tax rate will be set in October, and then tax bills will be hopefully mailed out sometime around November. And thank you, and any questions?
Thank you, Roseanne. And your comment at the beginning that there are many new councillors, it's always a good thing to start from A if you want to get to B. There's many new homeowners out there, many people that have found themselves in maybe a different financial situation, and they're looking at their taxes and their valuations more closely. So I appreciate the work that has gone into this and the many opportunities that we will have to understand this more fully going forward. But I'll open it up. The Assistant Mayor, then Councillor Cook. Is that a hand? Okay, that was a hand. And then Councillor Taber.
Thank you. Quick question for the council and for people at home. Right now, what is the percentage of our property value based on residential versus commercial? And what weight do those two categories carry?
I believe we were about, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I believe we were about 56% residential to 45% or something, 50-40 or 60-40, something like that. That's going to shift this time. There's going to, that will be shifting this time. The residential values in Portsmouth are very strong compared to the commercial property values in Portsmouth, and that's directly connected to what has been going on with COVID. Thank you.
Councillor Cook.
I was hoping you could just explain why we're doing a statistical revaluation versus a partial update.
Because our assessment level is, right now, we're, 2021, we report to the Department of Revenue every year where we feel our ratio is going to be, and they look at those sales. I'm estimating for this year, we're at 82%, but that's only until, from September. Since September, we've probably dropped another 5 to 10%. So we're probably in the 70s right now, as far as our market value is concerned. And the longer you wait to do a revaluation, the more chances there are for people to be valued all over the place instead of being very proportional to one another. The assessments just start to fall and become non-conforming. So evaluations correct that, and it's important to do that now. Our property values are been holding steady for the past two years, but steady at a much higher value than they were in 2019 when we did our revaluation last. So a partial update doesn't correct. A partial update just brings everybody up to the same assessment level. A statistical revaluation corrects.
Councillor Taber.
Thank you, Mayor. Roseanne, I've always been impressed by how methodical and how database your process is. When it comes to the commercial property, we have a lot of new property going on the books, like the Frank Jones Apartments and the West End Yards, Kate Street Projects, things like that. Are we able to, and there's no, it'd be difficult to get a dollar value for those if they were for sale. They're not, they're brand new. Can we require the income method to be used, and can we require those owners to give that income information?
No, they're not required. We have sent out income and expense questionnaires a couple of weeks ago, but that's purely voluntary. Nobody is required to send us that information. We do a lot of research. I have a lot of resources available to me that I can have a really good handle on what's going on in the income and expense arena with our commercial properties.
I know you watch the rents.
Yeah.
But I think that's important.
Yeah, no, they're not obligated, but we do have a lot of methods that we can utilize to make sure we get as accurate information as possible.
Thank you.
There's no more questions. Roseanne, thank you. I think that, you know, in terms of the budget, there's two levers. When folks get their tax bill, obviously, how much we spend up here from the council is one of those levers. The other lever is, you know, for the individual, how much they are proportionally going to pick up around that. This is a big part of that. It's disappointing to hear our commercial is falling versus our residential. If I own no commercial property, so that's a disappointment for me personally. I own no commercial property, so that's a disappointment for me personally. But it's also, I think, this, this is an education that we have to do year on, year off, with our residents to help them understand. So I thank you for doing that. I guess if there was one question, are we confident that since there was a two-year time period, since we've done this before, that it's taken into account the overall, I guess, influx of folks maybe finding a new means of work and permanently relocating up here? Or do you expect specific neighborhoods to find themselves in a, in a, in a more, I guess, valued market?
There are certain neighborhoods, and until I have the total analysis in front of me, I would really not like to go into that without having the actual statistical information in front of me. But from what I have been seeing, there are various neighborhoods that will be going up twice what the average neighborhood is going up in the city of Portsmouth, just because of the demand for those properties.
Thank you. All right. Roseanne, I think that's it. We have next on the agenda, the public hearing adoption of resolutions. We're gonna go back in order here. Resolution pursuant to, and this is, this is number A, resolution pursuant to RSA 72, colon, 39, dash B, amending the elderly exemption from property tax based on assessed value for the qualified taxpayers, such that the exemption shall be available only when the qualifying taxpayer assets do not exceed $500,000, whether single or married. I believe that is up from $175,000. Roseanne, do you have a presentation, or was it just to read what I just read?
It's basically what, to read what you just said, but I'd just like to give you some information about how many elderly we currently have in the city of Portsmouth. So we currently have 104 elderly exemptions. 21 of those fall between the ages of 65 to 74. 24 fall between the ages of 75 to 79. And over, and 59, which is over 50%, are 80 and over. The current asset limit was $175,000. That was changed around 2018, 17 or 18, from 125 to 175. The income limits had been changed by the city council last meeting, and I'm saying this for anyone that's watching tonight. The current level for income for single is $46,124, and for married, it's $63,108. The current tax impact for the elderly exemption is about eight cents. We did have, and I, Mayor, you asked a question last time, is how many denials do we have? I went and looked, and we had about seven. 50% of them were for asset levels that they didn't meet.
Okay. Thank you, Roseanne. So a sample motion would be to move to adopt the resolution as presented. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Denton?
Is there a public hearing before we adopt?
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Okay, so back to the public hearing. If you are in the public and you would like to speak on this, please line up, ask any questions. There's no time limit, but as I say, please keep three minutes in your heart, in your head, as you, as you address the council.
Good evening again. Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I was anticipating Roseanne's presentation tonight, and hoping it would answer some questions that I had in looking at this. I did a little bit of research as far as the new amounts here, and I, I'm, I guess requesting some more information as a, as a taxpayer who would be affected by this. How many taxpayers is it estimated that would fall within the new limit? And my reason for asking that is, this would probably make Portsmouth the highest in the state for assets. I did some research on this. Concord's limit is 98,000. Manchester's is 100 for single, 130 for married. Lebanon is 100,000. Nashville is 150, and Keene is 61 and 87. I guess the reason I'm asking about this is, I, I, I'd like an estimate on the, the impact that this is gonna have on, on our revenue. And this will be passed on to the other set of taxpayers. We only, we only have so many places where we get money to cover the expenses. And my first question would be, how many taxpayers would be impacted? And what is the, the revenue impact as we put this forward? And the next question, if you pass this, is how are you gonna cover the decrease from this in revenue? And I, the last thing, I guess I'd like to remind you is, when we decrease the revenue in one area, we have to make it up in another, because the only other place is property taxes. And that goes back to the same property owners as we're talking about with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Any other public comment? Any other questions? I will, oh.
My name is Julie Robb, and I live at 405 South Street. And I am one of those seven people who was turned down last year when I sought the elderly exemption. I know I don't look elderly, but at any rate, I wasn't thinking about trying it this year because it was my assets. So I just wanted to clarify. My house on South Street is, has gone up tremendously in value, as we know. So that would have counted towards my, no, the house is separate. It's just what I've saved for my dotage. So, okay. Well, that's good news, I think, for me. So I would be in favor of you voting for this. I understand what Ms. Huda's point is. Certainly, we'll have to get it elsewhere, but, you know, my money's only gonna go so far. Hopefully, I'll live a long time. And, but it's something to think about, you know. My, my house is one that has been in my family for 118 years now. My great-grandparents bought it in 1904. I built, bought the property, built it. And of course, it's gone way, way, way up. And my taxes are far exceeding what it costs to build the house. And my efforts to, to utilize my asset, to vacant lot that I have at the back, that was turned down last week by the ZBA. So I've gotta put my, my thinking cap on and come up with something else creative. So please be careful, please be gentle with us old folks.
Thank you, Julie. I know you're quite young. Any other, Counselor Bagley?
I guess I do have a question that former Counselor Huda brought up. Do we have an estimate on the impact to the overall taxes? Or I guess that's really difficult to predict? I don't know.
There would be no way to predict that. I would have to know how much everybody's assets are in the city of Portsmouth in order to predict if they would qualify for this or not, based on the asset limit. I mean, I don't even think the census would report on anything like that for me to be able to get the information from, to even estimate it.
So I guess I, thank you. Maybe it's a question, maybe it's a comment. If, if we do this, and I think we should because of what Julie just said, you know, it's important to keep residents in their home, that they don't get pushed out. If for some reason we pass this, and it's overly burdensome, is it something that we could revisit and lower next year to, say, $300,000 or something like that? Or how, what is the, if we went too far, is there a way to kind of come back?
So I'll just, I'll take this, let's say, there are two qualifications to get a, a discount on your home. Not no taxes, but a discount in terms of the value of your house being reduced. That is taxed on. So there's a limit in terms of the reduction. We increased that, it was last Counselor's term, we increased the total deduction that you get on a property, increased that. We increased this year already, the limits. Roseanne, are you, am I making a mistake here?
If you don't mind.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't increase the amount off the house. We were going to wait to do that until the revaluation, but what we did change were the income levels last time, increasing them.
So, sorry, what I meant is the previous council in, in the last two years. We, we increased the, the total percent off after Counselor Taber, I think, was who brought it up. But the, if somebody has their assets increased, what we noticed, or what I've noticed, and I think many going door-to-door, when we told people about the program, they said, "Well, I qualify because I'm, I'm only living on social security plus, you know, a, a small amount of money that I draw down to make up for that every, you know, every month in order to, to pay for expenses." But I have, because I wanna live, you know, as, you know, for another 20, 30 years, I have to make that money go as much as it can. And so to have the income limit where it was at $175,000 before, didn't really account for how people are, you know, moving off away from pensions into 401Ks and drawing down over retirement, and that was being held against them to see if they actually qualified from an income standpoint. And so this was to try to align to that, to keep more people in the homes that they've, they've lived in, knowing that, you know, the, the revaluations are likely going to be more impactful this year than previous. It's always possible that we would reduce it in future years. I would say it's tough to put genies back in the bottles, and this would be one of those genies.
Thank you.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to support the elderly in our, in our community, and I just wanna make sure our houses can't get jobs, right?
They can't.
I think I've heard you say that before, Mayor. But I think for that reason, and I know most people's houses' valuations have gone up, and that is adding a cost for them to stay in those homes. So I think it's important that, especially we support the elderly in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any others? I haven't held the, I haven't closed the public hearing, I guess, so, and you have a right to speak to the next one. So Counselor Huda, if you have another, or former Counselor Huda, Petra, if you'd like to return?
If I may just answer partial of Counselor Bagley's question. In our PAFR, it gives us the Portsmouth demographics, and I don't know how this would, would help, but 26% of our population, which is 5,862 people, are 45 to 64. That is the hard one to determine. But 13% of our population, 2009-31, are 65 to 79, and 4%, 902, are possibilities over 80. And in the last presentation, Roseanne noted that that had the most population that was participating. It's still a hard thing to do, and this is kind of a double-edged sword, but I guess it would, it would be great for everybody to know what, what numbers, what type of numbers you're looking at here, based on the concern from, from Counselor Bagley. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Petra. With that, or is it Counselor Cook? Do you have?
I just wanted to say something. The income levels that we're talking about, that we've already voted on, are actually really very low income levels, if you're paying property taxes in Portsmouth already. And when we're talking about $500,000 over the span of somebody's life post-65, with an average lifespan around 88 for the average person, that's, $500,000 is not a lot of money to, to make up the difference between 65 and 88, all those years. I think that, that this is a reasonable number, given the costs of property in Portsmouth. And we don't wanna lose residents because they can't pay their property taxes, especially residents who've been in their homes their entire lives. I think that it's really important for the character of Portsmouth that we consider those residents when we're thinking about this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. With that, I will call for a roll call vote.
Well, we need the motion on the table, remember?
Oh, we took it back. Okay. So first, a motion, move, if we had a motion to move to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved. Second?
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi.
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey.
Yes.
Unanimous.
I'd like to note that Roseanne has previously stated that she will be accepting applications for this for an extended period of time, given that this is a new addition. The deadline is April 15th, so if you're watching at home, don't use that as a way to, to put it in a June, you know, still get it in. But if you find out about this later, this is something that we are, we are actively holding open, so that people can be a part of the program. Next up is the same resolution, but for the disabled exemption. Resolution pursuant to RSA 72, colon, 37, dash B, amending the disabled exemption from property tax based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers, such that the exemption shall be available only when the qualifying taxpayer or taxpayers' assets do not exceed $500,000 when single or married. Roseanne, anything to add in terms of color and numbers around those currently qualified for this, or would be qualified?
The income information is the same as the elderly. We currently have only seven disabled taxpayers receiving this exemption. And currently, this exemption impacts our tax rate about three and a half cents.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
We, we, we still have a, a public hearing on this. So you caught me on the last one. You skipped it. Got you back, because Kelly pointed it out to me. But if anybody would like to speak on this, it's the same, but for the disabled exemption. Seeing that it's the same asset levels, we will close the public hearing on that and move on to a sample motion, which Counselor Taber was about to provide.
Yes, I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, we have, through the work of Counselor Denton and Counselor Lombardi, the resolution pursuant to RSA 72, colon, 35, modifying the optional tax credit for service-connected total disability in the amount of $4,000 as of April 1st, 2022, on the taxes due on the residential property of any veteran who has been honorably discharged or an officer honorably separated from the military service of the United States, and who has total and permanent service-connected disability, or who is a W. amputee or paraplegic because of service-connected injury, or the surviving spouse of such a person who has not remarried. Roseanne, is there a presentation on this?
No, I just wanted to go over, there are 45 current applicants that received this disability tax credit, and the increase would impact the tax rate less than half a cent.
Thank you, Roseanne. Any comments or questions on this? Counselor Denton?
I have a comment. There are numerous tax exemptions for honorably discharged veterans who also own residential property. I do not own residential property. I would highly encourage anyone who does in the city of Portsmouth to reach out to Roseanne's office, so I'm gonna give your number, at 603-610-7249, to see if you could apply for any of them. The deadline to submit the required paperwork is April 15th, so please reach out to their office. They're great to work with. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we actually have a motion? Did we not have a motion?
Public hearing, too.
So moved? Oh, there's, sorry, there's a public hearing. Anybody to speak on this? No? I'll entertain a motion. Move. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to bring forward Item 15C, which is actually my item on Prescott Park license fees.
Certainly. Second?
And just so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me pull it up myself. I move to adopt the fee committee's recommendation to reduce the FY '23 Prescott Park license fees by one-third.
So moved?
Your Honor?
There was a motion, and there was, or this is second. And Counselor Taber?
Yes, I have to recuse on this. I'm on the board of the Arts Festival, and my fiduciary role there conflicts with my fiduciary role with the city.
Okay. Now, Bob, does he actually have to step out when he recuses himself?
No, Your Honor, it's something like this.
Okay.
It matters where it's a quasi-judicial body.
Got it.
As opposed to legislative, we always recommend that the members step aside.
Okay.
But here, it would not be necessary.
All right. Any questions?
I could speak to this real quickly. As it says in the packet, the discounted Prescott Park license fees would be $1,080 for the New Hampshire Art Association, $4,679 for the Gundalo Company, and $14,396 for the Prescott Park Arts Festival. This is being recommended in recognition of the ongoing uncertainty that surrounds the pandemic. And FY '21, all these fees were waived. And in FY '22, they were reduced by two-thirds. So this is slowly ramping it back up in hopes of the following summer, that things are back to normal, but we're not there yet. And I've said this plenty of times in the past. The first summer of COVID did not feel like summer in Portsmouth without the Arts Festival. And what I learned that summer, and numerous up here did as well, is incredibly hard to run a arts nonprofit in the middle of COVID.
Would agree with that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make one more motion, Your Honor. I request that I be excused for the remainder of the meeting.
Godspeed.
All right.
Counselor Denton?
And just so the public knows, I'm having rotator cuff surgery at 5:45 tomorrow morning at the Portsmouth Hospital, thanks through the VA's Community Care Program. And I have full faith in the council and the decisions you make tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Josh, and may you have a speedy recovery and a safe surgery. Look forward to, we don't play a lot of council softball, but look forward to doing so once you, you're on the mend.
As do I.
Okay, after that brief suspension of the rules, I think we are on to the city manager's items which require action. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items requiring action by the council this evening. The first is a request related to the Watson's Landing subdivision, which was approved initially by the planning board. And the easements that are before you tonight were approved by the planning board way back on March 18th, 2021, and have subsequently been amended, something that's not in your, in the comments here. But in November of 2021, the planning board, with the advice and counsel of our legal department, amended the approval and the subsequent, and the, why we're bringing you the easements tonight is because there were four house, single-family home lots approved. And back in November of 2021, there was a definition that legal asked for to make it clear that there was a fifth lot to be created to show as the private road, so that, and just so the public knows, all five of those lots are conforming. And the three easements speak to water, sidewalk and utility, and sewer. And these have been approved by planning, public works, and the legal departments. And we are looking for acceptance of these three easements here tonight.
Counselor Moreau?
I'd make a motion that we accept the easements as presented.
Second?
Any questions, comments on these easements?
I could speak to them briefly. I think they're, they're very straightforward, and they give the city the access that we need in private developments when we don't have public streets, so. And I saw them back on planning board and the revisions all the way through, so I think it's, it's well done.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two relates to moving forward for authorization of a bond of up to $1.4 million for costs related to the feasibility and design of a new police facility and/or the rehabilitation of the existing facility, which was approved back in the FY '22 CIP. And we are bringing forth now so that the city can work with the Police Commission to advance the concept and the, the study, and the programming, really, the programming needs for a new police facility. So what we are looking to do, Your Honor, is to schedule a hearing on April 4th. And we need to do that at this time.
Oh, wait a sample motion, a de-sample motion.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to bring back for a public hearing and adoption the proposed building authorization for the feasibility and design of a new police facility and/or rehabilita, rehabilita, rehabilitation of the existing facility as presented for the April 4th, 2022, City Council meeting.
Second?
Any discussion on that? No? Well, I will say that I am happy to see that we're bringing this to a public hearing. It's been a few years since the last conversation around this. And it is a, a large ticket item that we will need public involvement. So look forward to scheduling that. I will, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have up next the consent agenda. The proper motion for adoption of the consent agenda, move to adopt the consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
All right. Give Beth the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like there's a 100-mile bike ride, bike ride coming up on September 24th. But it seems.
No, thank you.
Got to start training for that. And then there's presentations and written communications. First up is email correspondence, a sample motion, move to accept and place on file.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We've had the presentation from the city assessor as item B. Item C is a letter from Josh Denton, Commander VFW Post 168, inviting both myself, Assistant Mayor Kelly, and all of us as city councilors to observe the Welcome Home End of Afghanistan War Parade on Sunday, May 1st, 2022 at 1:00, or 10:00 a.m. A sample motion been moved to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, a letter from our city manager, Karen Conard, requesting the council conduct her evaluation as per the terms of her employment agreement with the city. Now, I think we need to, Kelly, you might have to help me out on this one. We, there's a specific stipulation in that we need councilors that have been here a year, so it only is myself, Counselor Taber, and Counselor Denton. Will I need to bring that back at the next meeting, or can I move to form that committee at this?
You can move to form that committee at this time.
So I will await a motion to form the evaluation committee consisting of city councilors that have been city councilors for a year at the time of June, and go about our business of the evaluation.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under my name, we have appointments to be considered. It's the, it's a true honor to be able to, to talk with the folks that, that want to serve the city in a, in a capacity that is often thankless, but no less, no less necessary than the work that we do here. First up is the, and these are just appointments to be considered, so no vote tonight. The reappointment of Rob Capone to the Cable Television and Communications Commission. Second is the appointment of Laura Lee Godfrey to the St. Ability Practice Blue Ribbon Committee. And the appointment of Alana Brooke to the Arts and Nonprofits Blue Ribbon Committee. I haven't yet sat in on the Cable Television Communications Commission, but I did get a chance to sit along with the Assistant Mayor this afternoon, and Counselor Cook at the Arts and Nonprofits Blue Ribbon Committee. There's a lot of great work that's going into that. I, I look forward to the work that Alana will be able to add to that. And Laura Lee, if I hadn't been impressed already with all of the work that she's done, I, I got to see her penmanship, and my God, it is a thing of beauty. It, it is honestly like a font. And I don't want to embarrass her more than I have, but I am so appreciative for the work that she's, she's done, just being herself in support of the, the city of Portsmouth, and excited to put her name forward next week to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee. So with that, I'm done. Onto Counselor Taber.
Thanks, Your Honor. I would request a vote to appoint Kevin Charette as our representative to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire with Peter Rice as an alternate. And I'll make that a motion if I can get a second.
Second?
I think I put Kevin's biography in here. We all voted to join the Community Power Coalition, and the city attorney reminded me that our appointment as a board member needs to be approved by the council. So if we can get that vote, we'll have a voice in how the Community Power Coalition develops over the next 18 months.
All right, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have Counselor Cook, but he's brought in, or Counselor Taber, but along with Counselor Cook. Selection of an audit firm for fiscal year 2022.
Thanks, Your Honor. The audit committee was formed by an ordinance under the old council. And Counselor Cook and I joined it this year. I think what we'll recommend, and I can make the motion, is that we, in response to both the process and what we've heard in the community, that we look at changing auditors, but we maintain Melanson one year. Typically, these audit contracts are three to five years. I, I would move that we maintain Melanson one year and then have another RFP process right away as soon as August. And I'll explain and give my reasoning for that, if I get a second.
Second?
So first, we want to thank Chairman Chris White and Jesse Lynch and Hawk Furman. They spent a lot of time interviewing the two applicants we had to be audited. Those were Melanson, which does almost all the cities in the state, and CLA, a larger firm. Both very good, both very capable. This was the maiden run for an audit committee that was created by the old council. And unfortunately, we had some miscues. And that's the reason for our, our interim recommendation of one year. Under the old council, the audit committee was very clear that they wanted to separate the audit from another process called the non-attest services. And the non-attest services are, we get an outside firm to convert our accounting from cash to accrual, is really all it is. Then this year, as we began interviewing firms, we learned that that was going to raise the cost about 15%. And we also learned that it's very common, and common practice, with proper safeguards, to have the same firm do the non-attest and the audit. But the RFP from last year was only for the audit. So in this process, we had to go back to the two bidders, and we had to ask them to, what, what price they would give us if they did both services. None of that was part of the RFP, and therefore not in writing. So that, that was a bit flawed. And then, in the process of going back to them, one of the committee members began communicating by text with one of the bidders. And this was an unfortunate development. It was not with any bad intent, but it did create a flaw in the process, at least for Counselor Cook and I, we thought so. So we discussed this, and I think the council has had a chance to deliberate on it. And it's, we think it's best to redo the competitive bidding. I liken it to a poker game where you miss a deal, and you pull in the cards and redeal them again, so that you have a good process. We'll get more bidders, I think. We'll probably get the same bidders. There may be more competition. We can bid for both the non-attest and the audit services, and, you know, we can have a clean process. So that's why we'd, we'd have a one-year contract with Melanson in the meantime, which in effect puts them on notice that, that we're really looking to open this up. So that would be the motion, and happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Cook, also on the audit committee.
I just wanted to echo what Counselor Taber said. It's really important that we get the process right. Financials are really critical for the city. That's a critical role for the city council. And we have to make sure that we are following the best process possible. So I think it's a wise decision to move forward with a one-year contract with our current auditor and then go out to bid again as soon as possible for a longer-term contract for both non-attest services and the audit.
Counselor Moreau?
I'm just wondering if this is even possible, where we're doing the one year with Melanson. I know that there's been a lot of comment out there about having the same company do it over and over again. Can we specifically request a fresh new team that hasn't done the city before within the company? I don't know if that's possible, but I thought I'd put it out there in the discussions because it might be a way to help alleviate any concerns that there might be out there.
That would be a question likely for the deputy city attorney, Assistant City Mayor.
She didn't know, I was going to make her come down.
Suzanne Woodland. Still, I got it out before you got in.
So there has already been some turnover in the team since last year due to the nature of they lost some employees and have added some employees. And the principal, Alina Korsak, I think this is only her second or third year, maybe it's the third year. So she would be finishing up the rotation. They have a rotation period at Melanson. I think it would be difficult to, given it's March, to dictate that there must be a change because they already do that in terms of their rotation.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, I guess, in the discussion and, and hearing from the councilors that were on the audit committee, appreciating the work that everybody did, in my personal job, or private job, I guess you'd say, I often deal with contracts because I, I sell large commercial equipment. And when I sell to what we call a mom and pop manufacturing plant, it's, it's very easy. You walk in, you talk to the owner, you close the deal with him or her, and you're on your way. I also deal with tier-one defense contractors, universities, all around the world. And it's a very strident, rigorous process where, once the RFP goes out, there's a lot of rules to make sure that happens in a very fair and transparent way. If you don't have that background, you may not be. way. If you don't have that background, you may not be aware of how challenging those rules can be to follow sometimes. And it sounds like maybe the rules were not followed as well as they could have been. So I think this is a good compromise, where we kind of take a mulligan. We do one more year. I think all of us are aware that everybody would like to try a new audit firm, since it's been such a long time. But I don't think we want to do it with such an important thing as the city finances. We want to make sure that we cross every T and dot every I, in my opinion. So I think this is a reasonable compromise.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Tabor.
Yeah, and I just did want to add too, because I think this process had to go on in non-public, because we had competitive bidding going on, and it's awkward if you start doing that in public session, because one bidder sees, or it's a discussion of the other bidder. But what we did also do, and this was good work by the citizens on this committee, we did extensive interviews of the two firms. We checked references. The whole committee was in on reference calls. We developed a matrix that 70% the qualitative abilities of the firms, 30% the cost. And so all that good work, I would hope, would go into the second process, and hopefully we get more bidders.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. I will just add, if there are no other comments or questions, that I appreciate the work of the Audit Firm, or the Audit Committee. I appreciate the work of the council, of staff, and of the citizens that served on the committee. I think that when I supported this two years ago, it was in recognition that this was an opportunity to bring greater transparency to the city of Portsmouth's finances, how we spend your money in an effort to serve you, the citizen. It's unfortunate that there were a slight breakdown in process, a process that is important. I don't believe any of these were with ill intent, but in representing the government and the people, we have to follow a process, and that process has to be able to sustain scrutiny. And I do not believe that it could sustain that scrutiny in this event. So I appreciate that the recommendation has been basically to start this process over in a matter of months. And so when August comes and this is developed, I am confident that the work that the Audit Committee, good work that the Audit Committee has done, will not be in vain, and that the city of Portsmouth can see exactly the caliber of people that we have, and the seriousness we take when it comes to taxpayer finances. So with that, I will have a roll call vote on the motion. If we could just read the motion back, Kelly, because Counselor Tabor, he editorialized after. I just want to make sure that I'm not agreeing to any of that.
Okay. That we maintain Melanson for one year and then have another RFP process in August.
Perfect.
Okay.
Everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton has left. Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we've already tackled Josh's, or Counsel Denton's, in anticipation of his earlier departure. Next up is Counselor Bagley. First item, action items needing approval by city council.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so as the council representative on the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee, I will, from time to time, have to bring forward things for council approval. And tonight, action items needing approval by the city council. Acceptance of November 16th, 2021 minutes authorizes implementation of temporary parking and traffic regulation for creation of loading zones as metered parking inventory for designated times. And acceptance of November 16th, 2021 minutes authorizes the conversion of three unmetered parking spaces on Market Street to metered spaces in Zone B, standard occupancy zone. And do we want to do those two first?
Yes, we'll take these first, and then we'll go to the second. So.
If I get a second, I'll speak further.
I'll second.
And so, sorry, just the motion again, is to move to accept, first, the acceptance of, we'll take November 16th first, if that, move to accept that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Your Honor. So.
Can you have a second with Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
So what we're doing here is, actually, I hope there's a lot of people at home watching, because we're going to create, I think it's 39 parking spaces downtown. The way we're going to do this is we, and by we, I mean the previous council, because this happened back in November, evaluated the loading zones and discovered that after 3:00 p.m., quite a few of them weren't used, or on Saturdays and Sundays. So that loading zone area downtown had the potential to be a paid parking space that residents and visitors to our city could use to park downtown. So what we're going to do is create those, turn those loading zones into paid parking after 3:00 p.m. and on weekends. And in the packet, it breaks it down which loading zones, so it's not all loading zones in the city. They'll be duly marked with signage. But the reason we're doing this is to increase the parking inventory in town, particularly in the evenings, when the inventory is in most demand.
Any questions for Counselor Bagley? Counsel Blaylock, and then Counsel Moreau.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Counsel Tabor.
I just wanted to ask Counselor Bagley, you said the valuation was done in November on the loading zones. Did you say the day of its review?
This was the November Parking, Traffic, and Safety meeting. The valuation, I believe, was done in the summertime.
Okay.
Prior to that.
Excellent. My only concern was that if it was done in November, that there wouldn't be a high time for our loading and everything. But doing it in the summer, I think, is very appropriate. It gives a good idea of what the usage and everything, what actually happens.
Counsel Moreau.
I guess my only concern, when I was looking at the list of all the spaces that were getting changed over, the one on High Street, outside the entrance to the parking garage on High Street, you were going to remove, I believe, remove that altogether. My concern is that there's a proposal coming down the pike for a very large development in that parking lot right next to where those spots are, and it's going to get really tight for loading and unloading, depending on what businesses end up being in there. So I just think, is it, if you turn it into parking spots, can we then turn it back to loading down the road if that's needed? I guess would be my big question.
Your Honor, if I may?
Counsel Bagley.
Perfect segue to talk about something that I learned recently, and that is the omnibus that happens with parking, traffic, and safety. And what we're doing effectively here is we're changing things in the city that require fees. And in order to do that, we need to have a three readings. But every time we change a parking space, or we change a loading zone throughout the course of the year, which happens frequently, because of, such as Counsel Moreau just suggested, there might be a need to adapt, we'd be constantly doing, be doing these readings. So what we do is we evaluate these things in Parking, Traffic, and Safety, and if there's a need to adapt, we will. And then we adapt. And then at the end of the year, everything that's a change, and that has become permanent, then gets codified with three readings. So this is the omnibus, and by the council approving these minutes, gives us the ability to go out, implement the changes, see if they work or don't work, and then at the end of the year, we kind of formalize them.
So it's like a test run. I like it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the city manager will correct me if I got any of that.
No, you got that right. Thank you.
And I'll just add, the reason I believe that this went away from approval of minutes to approval of action items is during the conversation around the Middle Street bike lanes, that by approving the minutes, we had approved the action of the PTS and required a higher vote threshold. And so we moved away from that process last year. But it seems like it's time to move back. Counselor Tabor, and then anybody else?
Yeah, I think this is a great way to get more parking. Thirty-nine spaces, I think, was the number. In the minutes, it said that we were going to reach out to the businesses through the EDC. I just wondered if that had happened, if we had good communication with all the businesses.
That will happen. And with us tonight is our new Assistant City Manager for Economic Development, who will be staffing the EDC, and we will make sure that happens.
Any other questions, comments on this? I just had two brief ones. One on the reaching out to the businesses, making sure that we have a, you know, we're going above and beyond to make sure that we get a response, or if we don't get a response, a leaflet or something. Seems like a small enough area that we can, we can do the same type of outreach as we do for, you know, Middle Street bike lane projects. And I think a, an opportunity is these, you know, so everybody knows how to use QR codes now, for any signage to include a QR code that would, you know, bring them to the proper area to be able to give feedback. Second, I just had a question for Counsel Bagley on this. If it is a, if it is a loading zone, and somebody's parking in that loading zone, they have until 3:00. Are there businesses that have deliveries after 3:00? And then how is this taking into account any business that would be maybe negatively impacted by a load, or a need to unload after 3:00?
Yeah, so what happened was we evaluated quite a few loading zones. And in some of the loading zones, there's no change recommended. So what was seen there was activity after 3:00. So those loading zones will remain a loading zone until it expires at 8:00 p.m. or whatever the current time is. And the loading zones where we didn't see activity, and it typically seemed to be about 2:00, those ones now are free to park in, or not free to park in, but you can pay to park in after 3:00 p.m. So it's very selective. It looked at all the loading zones in the city, and some of them are going to cease to be loading zones, because there's no activity at all, and others will continue to operate exactly the same way they did previously. And some will be in the middle where we're opening up for some of the time. So it's very targeted to the loading zone and the activity seen at that loading zone.
Okay. And then when no activity, is it no activity, like zero cars, or zero unloads, or limited activity?
I didn't do the survey, so I guess I shouldn't speak to it.
I can speak to that. Parking Director Ben Fletcher and his staff made sure that the affected businesses understood the proposed changes, and took great strides to understand the loading zone habits, if you will, of the businesses. So as such, the recommendations are as you see them here. And what we would do is, once these are codified and put into test run mode, if you will, Parking Director Fletcher and Economic Development, Sean Clancy will work together to message the new changes to the affected businesses in that they're in that test run phase, if you will.
Okay.
So they can test it out.
And then, I guess finally, there's a benefit to the business in that parking spaces are now parking spaces, and people can park there, and it's not a loading zone.
That's correct. And this might be a good time, if I may, to express, if you recall when we had the discussion about parking spaces for restaurants, we generate, I think it was three, just under $3,000 in revenue for loading zones by selling permits to people that use them. But the revenue generated for the city would have been on the magnitude of $150,000. So to say that we only give a discount to one segment of the businesses, I think is inaccurate, because the loading zones help stores, they help restaurants, they help residents. So as a city, we're always looking for ways to help the city as a whole, and we're not trying to target to any one specific area. We're trying to be as equitable as we can. And Ben Fletcher, our Parking Director, does a great job of looking at the science and how other similar-sized cities are run, and what makes the most sense. So this is kind of the evolution of that. What this does is it returns 39 parking spaces to the inventory, and it also returns some revenue to the city.
Thank you, Counsel Bagley. Counsel Tabor.
One more question, if I could, Your Honor. How quickly would we implement this? I'm just wondering if we might be smart to give time for the notification. So are we looking at maybe 30 days out, or 45 days out?
I can report that back to the council. It will take us some time to fabricate signs and to get messaging out, and in that time, we can start the outreach process to the affected businesses. But I'll bring a report back on timeframe to the group.
Your Honor, I guess maybe this, if, since we haven't created the signs yet, would it be possible to put either a QR code or some sort of contact point to the parking office for people that may have concerns or questions on these signs? Does that make sense? I'm not sure if it does.
Yeah, I'll speak with the staff and provide that as part of the report back, but I'm happy to advance that request.
Thank you, Counsel Bagley. I appreciate the work on this and the work of the PTS of last year of moving this, moving this forward. You know, it's, there's a lot of work to do in the city, and to have committees that are focused on efforts like this is certainly appreciated, to be able to dive into the details. The efforts of my questions were to make sure that those that are tuning into this for the first time are made aware of the work that has already been done on that, so appreciate that. And with that, all in favor of this change? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Still on you with the conversion of.
Yeah, so conversion of three unmetered parking spaces adjacent to the park at Market Street and Russell Street to Zone B, and that's Bohanko Park, I believe. And if we, if the motion would be to acceptance of the November 16th, 2021 minutes authorizes the conversions of three unmetered parking spaces on Market Street to metered spaces in Zone B, standard occupancy zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just to speak to this, once again, it has to come before the council, because it's creating a fee for our residents to pay. We're constantly evaluating our parking inventory, and I believe the goal is to have 85% occupancy. Once that number exceeds 85%, we want to adjust either the price of the parking or start to charge for the parking. The goal is to have that 85% occupancy number, and this would get us closer to that goal.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
One more. Parking and Traffic Safety Committee Action Sheets and Minutes of November 16th, 2021, January 6th, 2022, February 3rd, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022 meetings. In the sample motion, move to accept and approve the action sheets and minutes of the November 16th, 2021, January 6th, 2022, February 3rd, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022 Parking and Traffic and Safety Committee meetings.
Second.
Just a quick legal inquiry from our city attorney.
Yes, Your Honor.
What is the legal opinion on voting to approve minutes and action sheets of meetings that we have not ourselves attended?
There are two things that apply, Your Honor. Just a general principle of parliamentary law, Roberts Rules of Order, kind of thing, is that acceptance of a recommended action of a subcommittee accepts those actions. With regard to traffic and safety, the second thing, is actually a very specific provision right in the ordinance that says that.
So we would be within our duties, to put this in plain English that I can understand, to accept these minutes as part of our duty as a city council, as required in the ordinance of PTS.
Your Honor, when you had mentioned the bicycle bollards on Middle Road, it froze the blood in my vein, because of the significance of what you were saying. And that is the point you just made as well, and it is accurate.
Thank you. I hesitated to bring it up. All right. With that, are there any further questions or comments from the council before vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Counsel Bagley. Appreciate the work you've been doing on PTS. Next up is the approvals of grants and donations. First up is acceptance of donations to the Portsmouth 400th. First, Roberta Keenan, $50. Next is Peter and Kathleen Samsic for $623. A sample motion, move to approve and accept the donations as presented. A sample motion, move to approve and accept the donations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And I would just like to thank everyone who has donated and appreciate continued support of the 400th. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the approval of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, or CWSRF, and the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, ARPA, Grant for Wastewater Infrastructure Projects. Sample motion, move to approve and accept grants for the City of Portsmouth up to $2,080,050 from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Question from Counselor Cook.
Yes, I just, I wanted to ask the city manager a question if possible. I'm wanting to know how, if this has any impact at all on our other ARPA funds, specifically how we can use them or not use them if we're accepting additional funds from the state.
Happy to answer that question, Your Honor. The city went out and procured the availability of grant funds separate and apart from the ARPA funding that is coming straight to the city. So in this case, the funding we are seeking and got approval from from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services does not preclude us from using our own allocation of ARPA funding for similar type projects. I hope that answers your question.
Great question, Counselor Cook. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to the city manager's informational items. First, on to you.
Thanks, Mayor. The first of four that we have for you this evening is the long awaited memo from Pillar Design Studios outlining the process that will take the contemplated skate park and pump track through design into construction. And this was provided by the firm. This firm has the ability to do both design build and design bid build. And that is a decision the city will make once we've achieved 30% design of the project. And I just want to make that known to the group. And the second page of the memo speaks to a proposed schedule which takes design tasks through the summer, getting us to 30% and then to get us to 100% design by the end of the calendar year, that's the goal. And then to look to construction in the spring of 2023. Happy to answer any questions. And I also have DPW Director Rice here with me.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Blalock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say the Skateboard Park Committee has been working very hard, working with Peter Rice and Todd Henley. They've been doing a great job and the process has been moving along nicely. We're anxious to get to the 30% part where we can kind of decide what direction we go. But I also want to remind the public, we are running, we are raising funds for the lights of the skate park. So we're accepting donations. You can donate right on the city website. We're also having a fundraiser at 3S Art Space next month and hope to raise a lot of money for the lights and light these kids up so they can skate.
Thanks, Counselor Blalock. All right. Next step under, oh, sorry. Assistant Mayor, for my rowing days, I don't turn this way as easily.
My question would be for, I guess, the city manager. Have we committed a signed contract to Pillar for design and construction? Or will be the process, our normal RFP process to then?
It will be, it will be an RFP process to commit beyond the design phase. And I'm looking at Peter Rice, who tells me we are committed with Pillar through the design phase. And then beyond design, we would need to go out for RFP.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Next up would be the update on the proposed Daniel Street construction to take place in the month of April into early May. This relates to the project being conducted by McNabb Properties, known as Brick Market at 60 Penn Hollow Street. And there will be weekday work on the street block of Daniel between Penn Hollow and Market Square, which will cause at times disruption to the flow of traffic. As mentioned, the bulk of the work will take place in the month of April and into early May with repaving to follow. Severino Construction is the contractor that McNabb has hired to do this work. And there are really two sets of work. One is relegated to the street for which there will be detours. The street work includes drain line and electric utility work. And then there will be concurrent and subsequent work that is outside of the street realm specifically. It'll include sidewalk reconstruction, new curbing, the facade work that you've seen and you will continue to see. So DPW Director Rice is here to answer any questions. I am happy to promote and share with the public that there will be a second public input session where the public can hear from McNabb and Severino, the process and the schedule of events. And that will take place on Wednesday, March 30th at 1:00 PM. And we will provide that information and update that as it may be needed to do so. So happy to pause there and grab any questions from the council.
Any questions in the council? Counselor Bagley, Counselor Cook, Counselor Moreau. Any of these for Peter Rice? Should he start walking? All right, Peter.
Sorry, Peter.
Would you mind coming up? Whoa, this is steps, he's getting his steps in. He's been sitting for two hours here. Thank you, Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Peter Rice, Director of Public Works.
So specifically, it sounds like this is for infrastructure, stormwater and underground wiring, but it says to replace existing underground wiring. Will the above ground wiring, for the most part, also be moving underground?
Yes.
With this, so this will improve the aesthetic, overall look of that street considerably once all the paint is done?
Yep.
Okay. That was my question.
Easy. Counselor Cook.
We have received some comments from local businesses who are clearly concerned about the impact of construction on their businesses. What efforts are we taking at the city level to increase signage so that everybody knows the businesses are open? And what are we doing to also help maybe mediate discussions with the contractor?
So first of all, I truly appreciate the concern that businesses have. I know it's been a long haul. It's hard to believe that, you know, a project like this has gone on as long as it has, but they're actually coming towards the end of the disruption, you know, the major disruption. We are talking to the contractor and the developer about preparing signage that says, you know, businesses are open, you know, please, you know, cater to them or please go to them. We're working to make sure we, as a department, meet with them on a weekly basis to make sure we understand what the disruptions are and to make sure that they're communicating on a regular basis. You know, construction in and of itself is disruptive. To have not adequate coordination on top of it makes it that much more difficult for businesses to anticipate day to day fluctuations and challenges and impacts to them. What we're trying to do is we're trying to help facilitate that communication, you know, working with the deputy city manager as well as the manager, reaching out to the developer and trying, you know, working to make sure that happens. The, it's very disruptive, but we are getting towards the point where the major disruption is coming to a point where it's going to be finished up. That doesn't mean there's not going to be sidewalk work, there's going to be facade work, there's going to be other things going on, but the bigger impacts are going to, you know, get done. At the end of the day, there's going to be a new section of roadway there. The drainage is going to be improved, it's going to be separating the storm sewer from sewer. So there's a benefit to the city for those reasons. But, you know, we really understand it's been a long haul for the businesses down there and it's been very disruptive. And we, you know, we understand that and we're trying to address that.
Counselor Moreau, and the Assistant Mayor, and then I forgot who's else.
Counselor Cook really asked my initial question, but sort of a follow up to that. One of the other sort of requests was to ensure during this whole month of April where you will, might have to disrupt traffic from that, can you make sure that there are clear paths to the businesses? You know, not only the signage, but a way for people to safely get to and from the businesses while all those changes are going on?
Yeah, absolutely. The temporary crosswalk to make sure that the people understand to get across safely and things like that, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
The Assistant Mayor, and then Counselor Taber.
That's it. Thank you, Your Honor. It's a great segue into my question of, is this mostly going to affect vehicle traffic? Or is this also going to affect pedestrian traffic? I know right now we just have the one side of the sidewalk.
So from July, from April 4th to the 22nd, it's going to be daytime detours for roadway. The sidewalks will be maintained throughout that time period. There will be periodic disruptions if, you know, somebody has to get up on the sidewalk to do something, but it, the sidewalks will be maintained throughout that period of time. The, we can also look at putting a temporary crosswalk to make sure folks coming up from Cali B side can cross safely and make sure that's clear. And I'm sorry, what was the second portion of the question?
I forget, so I feel like that covered the whole portion of the question.
If I can add to the conversation, weather could have the impact of altering the schedule. I just want to make sure that the information Peter is giving is based on decent working conditions and understanding Severino's schedule. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct, but, you know, I reviewed their proposed schedule and given the amount of work, I feel like they were conservative in that they included the potential for weather. You know, obviously, if we have a horrific, you know, torrential 30 days of rain, biblical proportion stuff, you know, all bets are off. But I'm comfortable at this time, but we're going to be doing weekly meetings, getting a feel for, you know, what their progress is and, you know, if they're on schedule or off schedule, so we'll be able to report back.
Counselor Taber.
We had a request from Sheriff Wagono at Mo's about replacing the lost 15 minute parking with perhaps some spaces on Market Street or Pleasant Street. Would we need a council vote to do that or could staff do that?
Typically, we bring that to PTS, correct? They originate their income here?
It depends on, depends on the duration. I mean, if it's a, if it's a short duration related to construction, it's not more than 30 days, we can do it as a simple administrative action. So we would anticipate that would be a simple administrative action. Once the drainage is done, which they're predicting to be from the 4th to the 22nd, the parking, 15 minute parking spaces in front of Mo's will be reestablished. So it won't be a loss of that traffic or that, the parking for that entire duration of the work. It'll be just during the first 20 some odd days.
Okay, so that would be within the duration that we can do something administratively?
I believe that's something we could do.
Okay.
Counselor Blalock.
And Peter, you did mention maybe possibly put a sign to say that they were still open. I know I've seen those in the past when construction is disrupted.
Yeah, I believe we either reached out or we will be reaching out to the developer to prepare those signs.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
I had a couple of questions, Peter. Thank you for all the work on this. Who is in charge of this portion of the work? Meaning in the, in the, in the street? Is it McNabb or is it the city?
All the work associated with this project is the developer's responsibility. Typically, we would have very little involvement in this type of thing because it is the developer's work, other than we'd make sure the quality work that's done and doing it per our specifications. However, in this case, where it has been so disruptive and the communication and coordination has been as challenging as it has been, it's appropriate for our involvement to help minimize the continued challenges. So it is the developer's responsibility, it's part of their site approval to do this work. So it clearly rests in their area. However, we, when we see challenges and problems, we don't turn our back and walk away. You know, we have to step up and help out, so that's where we're at right now.
Okay. And it's appreciated, you know, I think that we've learned a lot in this project and we'll take it to other projects that will have similar impacts in the city going forward. And, you know, we're not short of those projects. And so I think that having more of a city involvement is a positive thing around trying to make sure that the communication is happening. As part of that, is it possible to, on either the DPW portion of the website or the planning board portion of the website, have the latest updates from the developer on their schedule updated there? I understand that they currently provide email updates, but the concern I have with that is that when somebody goes to check or they hear something from somebody else, there's often conflicting reports of what is actually on the schedule for the following week.
Sure, we can look at how best to do that. That's, it's a very reasonable request. My only concern is the unintended consequence of starting to have to post, you know, other private entities' information when it's really their responsibility. However, in this case, we are involved in it, we are helping to manage a portion of the project, so I think it's appropriate. But I would have to just, you know, obviously work with the city manager and make sure we do it in a manner that's not, that's clear why this is an exception to the rule.
Okay. And then in terms of the timeline, and I think this is what kind of created some of the outreach and concern from, and I don't want to speak for any of the abutters to this project, but last time when we spoke, I think it was the 22nd in January, we discussed this work, that this work was going to occur. They were surprised to find out when sidewalks were occurring on private property that this work was going to occur. So I would ask that the communication from the developer, or if we're stepping in, has a time horizon that is more than a week away. And I understand that's what we're doing now and we're stepping in in order to grab that. But it's my understanding of this work from what we've stated, from April 4th to May 22nd or April 22nd?
So April 4th to April 22nd is going to be drainage work.
Okay.
And that is going to be a full road closure during the daytime. On the weekends, it'll be fully open, at night it'll be open. After that, it'll be a partial road closure, so the lane of traffic will be maintained. Some of the parking will be disrupted while they install the underground electrical. That'll be till May 12th, I believe. After that, it'll be curbing and sidewalk, which is really compressed against the side and that'll, that'll be, it won't be disruptive earthwork in the roadway. It'll be curbing and brick work and facade work on the side of the building.
And that will go until the end of May?
That'll go into the, so the electrical work goes into middle May and then the side, the curbing is anticipated to be about a week. And then the sidewalk, which pushes it out into May. They're predict, predicting the, some additional work on Penn Hollow. They're supposed to be out of the street in total when school, roughly when school gets out. But the impacts to, the major impacts should be opening up, reduced in middle, end of. Major challenge is April 22nd, that's a full closure. After that, it'll be a partial closure for a while, but it'll be less disruptive.
And when partial closure, we mean we're allowing traffic to go through by maybe removing parking from the?
Section of the roadway.
Section of the roadway. And the parking on the other side is gone, so it would be removing all the parking from that section?
From roughly Penn Hollow to the driveway before Mo's.
Okay, so Bob's spot, okay.
Yep.
All right. And then, so that brings us through April, May, and then there's still June. And they have, the encumbrance is till the end of, the end of June per the permit that we approved on January 22nd.
Correct.
And that, and so is it our working assumption right now that they will finish at the end of May or in terms of the encumbrance? Or does that go all the way, are we expecting them to?
Well, they're likely going to want to continue to use that encumbered space, which is really the loading zone in that area, to lift material up to the upper floors and to use as lulls. It's not going to be as disruptive, but it's still, they, they will probably be using that space for the duration of what they had asked for.
Okay. Okay. On the same topic, is there a way that we can help some of the business owners that tend to be the enforcement mechanism, either calling, you know, some of our, the city, or trying to reach out to the developer in terms of identifying, like, this is, you know, signage that, you know, this is a 15-minute spot, you are not allowed to feed the meter here for construction work, or this is a, you know, construction process happens on, on this side. I think some of the frustration is with some individuals having to continually enforce their own sidewalks, so to speak. And I know that's not, well, it comes to us through those complaints, but it should be on the developer to ensure that they're-
They police their, their folks. You know, we've been talking to the developer. I actually was onsite a couple weeks ago, and I actually stopped the construction in the middle of doing what they were doing because they were disrupting the roadway, and, and I was very clear to them, you know, get off the roadway, and I talked to the developer, and, and this, you know, this was, as all this was coming really to a head again, and really helped get everybody's focus to, to the challenges that they're, you know, having on the area. So, you know, we're very much aware of it. Staff, you know, my staff are aware of it, and they do get in there, and, you know, the, the challenge is that second you, you, you know, somebody walks off, you know, somebody pulls in and does something that is disruptive. So it's, it's a challenge, but we, you know, we need to work with the developers so that they, you know, stay on top of their people, and they need to identify somebody that's going to do that coordination. So we're working with them to, to make that request. I think a number of the requests from the residents of the businesses are really good, good suggestions, and I think they're things we've forwarded to the developer, and we'll have, be having a conversation with them to see, you know, how we're going to be able to implement that, to see proof that is happening.
Right. And then, I guess the question, the last question that I have on this, if we found ledge in the, in the, where we're trying to do the work, or something that's not weather-related, we can't, you know, if the weather is, is bad, it's going to delay things, but if we found something that was, immediately told us that there was going to be two more months or three more months of work instead of what was thought to be a, you know, an April-May project, then is looking at a all-the-way-through-the-summer project. Is our intent to take it all the way through the summer, or is our intent to rethink the timing of this?
Knowing the length of drain line they have to install, knowing what it takes to get ledge out, it would be very unlikely for the project to be delayed to that level. It's one trench, it's a 12-inch pipe, it's not a deep pipe, so, you know, ledge is already anticipated. The contractor's already said that they, you know, if they have ledge, they're going to use mechanical means to remove it. It is a disturbed area already, so that me, meaning that some pipes and things are already on the ground, so that ledge is probably broken up. So it's, I would, I would be, we will find out very quickly if there's going to be any delays, and we will, we will report back, but I would not anticipate it being pushed, the roadwork being pushed out that far.
All right. Well, I, I thank you for this. I think, you know, that it's coming to the end is a positive thing. People have, at least myself, you know, I, I remember, you know, the last 15 minutes of meetings more than I remember the first 15 minutes, so, you know, hopefully the developer can finish, you know, in accelerating with communication, understanding that it's important to, to set the example of the type of communication that, that they have with the abutters in large downtown projects that require close quarters and, and action, to make sure that we're, we're closing the encumbrance aspect of this out in a, in a high level so that, you know, there is a, a feeling that people are being listened to, and, and thoughts and concerns are, are being met with empathy and understanding that it is a business to build buildings, but it's also businesses that their livelihoods and reputations and, you know, futures depend on them being able to serve their customers.
If you recall the State Street project, that was a city-run project. We did extensive outreach, we did an advertising campaign, we, you know, had dig, dig State Street signs, we had regular meetings. It was very disruptive, but the communication as part of our project was, was consistent, and that's what we need to approach these projects are. When private developers are doing this, we need to hold them to the same type of care that we would do for the projects. And so that's, you know, unfortunately, that's a lesson learned, you know, a little too, it's not too late, but it's later in the game, and it'd be nice, you know, next, next time around, we'll, we'll be that much more aware and that much more on top of it.
And I, and there's, you know, bad news is always, you know, it's always better the sooner I hear it, and I think that is for, for most people as well, and there's a lot of externalities here with, with COVID and, and a lot going on. So appreciate it, Peter. I appreciate the time that city staff has, has put into this. If there's no other questions, we'll finally let the city manager move on to her last informational item.
Before I do, Mayor, I just want to share with the group that in response to our demands, really, for a heightened sensitivity to the needs of the abutters, the developer has put a new person, not, not new to their staff, but new to the project, on for the sole purpose of helping keep an eye on their, their own subcontractors and other activities in the streets. And that gentleman is being very, has been responsive to our staff and should add a heightened, heightened sensitivity to the, to the overall project.
Thank you.
Last, no, number three of four, is an update on the fact that we are now able to receive, or I can say that city customers, through our online payment partner and their work with PayPal, means customers of the city have the option of using cryptocurrency to make city payments. And what I can stress is that that is because of the third-party entity that's doing the cash exchange. Mayor, you know, we've talked about this several times, that the state is still working to allow state subdivisions, of which a municipality is one, to accept their own cryptocurrency. But for now, because of that third-party involvement, we can now receive payment from customers who would like to use cryptocurrency. So we just wanted to bring that to the council's attention.
Any questions on that? I had one quick comment. I have asked for this, you know, from a standpoint of, I think there's a lot with the underlying technology of blockchain that a municipality can learn from, you know. I am definitely the type of person that I hear and I forget, I see and, and I remember, I do and I understand, and I hope that there is an opportunity for us to, to do more around this, just so that we are not missing out on anything, whether it's, it's raising money or creating opportunities to, you know, have more trust in digital formats ongoing from a municipal level. So I will, at some point in the future, being a, a subcommittee that, that studies and focuses on this, and I would ask members of the public to reach out if there's a desire to be a part of this.
Great. And, and last up this evening would be a wonderful announcement, and I want to acknowledge that in addition to Director Rice's efforts, we have Deputy Director Brian Getz and City Engineer Terry Damaris here. Through their concerted efforts over the past year and working with Kerry Thurman and Congressman Pappas's office, we are lucky to be the recipients of $600,000 in grant funding from the federal government through the congressionally-directed spending projects line, really known as earmarks. You may recall, if you've, if you're a federal government junkie like me, that earmarks were, were popular and went away. They've come, they've made a comeback. And where I really should say is that, apologies for the typo in this memo, this is for the Little Bay Waterline Project. It make reference, makes reference to Great Bay, but it is Little Bay. But really, Brian and Terry impressed upon the congressman's office and a panel of reviewers the importance of this regional project. And the good news is that $600,000 was signed into law. It will offset the, the more than $6 million in project costs, and we're excited. So they're here if, if anyone has questions, but it was, it was a great effort by the whole team.
Thanks, Brian and Terry. Congressman Pappas, I haven't found $600,000 to the city yet, so I appreciate that you guys are doing the hard work up there. So very much appreciated that work, and it's a big project that we all depend on. And not the most glamorous project, but when you think about it, it is the most necessary to ensure that we have fresh drinking water. So appreciate your continued efforts in, in the pursuit to keep us secure in that.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any miscellaneous business, including business remaining finished at previous meetings? Counselor Tabor.
I had the pleasure to go on a business trip with two members of the Police Commission, Buzz Shure and Kate Coyle, and Peter Rice and Joe Almeida from our staff, and our chief of police and Captain Maloney. And we learned all about building new police stations. And I'll give you a couple of takeaways if you want to take the time to do that. The costs that we've been looking at, $600 a square foot, are unfortunately not out of line. We learned that it's up to $1,000 a square foot in California, it's up to, it's down as low as 500 in the Midwest, but we're sort of right in the range. We really learned a lot about how buildings need to be designed for, the way police work is changing. Community policing is different now than it was five years ago, and it's changing quickly. And we saw some of the best practices, and there's a lot of emphasis on wellness of the sworn officers. Crisis intervention and community partnerships are now much more a part of community policing. And so we took a look into, you know, what a 21st century building needs to be like, and we're in a 20th century building. So that was really interesting. We learned a lot. As you would imagine, it was run by the Association of Chiefs of Police. It ran with military precision. Everything was on time, but we learned an awful lot. And it was also a great chance for that group of us to talk about the work ahead and, and potentially, you know, forming a project team out of that. So it was a great experience, and we look forward to using what we approved tonight to get some expertise to help us really look at how we could redesign a more effective police facility. The last thing that we talked about, too, was we saw living examples of how various chiefs around the country and their, and their command staff had made the case for a new facility, had shown the deficiencies and where they were. And, and so we talked about a tour for the city council and helping bring the community along to that awareness as well. So it was a good visit, a good trip.
Thanks, Counselor Tabor. Counselor Mardy.
Yes, I had the, thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the Peace Development Authority meeting, a board meeting, and it was exceedingly well-attended by residents. There's, and the big question is, is about the cargo, development of a cargo port there. There's, there's a lot of concern and a lot of lack of information about that facility at this point. And so people have a lot of assumptions about what it is coming. But, so what I, I suggested to Paul Breen, the executive director, is that it might be useful for him to do what he's done in Greenland, I think, and in Newington, as he, he came before the city board and, and gave a presentation. And I wonder if that might be something he might do here and make sure it's well-advertised so that people can come and, and view that.
That would be, I think, a fantastic use of time. I'll, I'll look to you to see if that is something that you would like to see as a work session, where there's, you know, more back and forth, or if there's a presentation that people can obviously provide public comment to as part of a regular meeting.
My fear of a, of a back and forth is that it will be all night.
Oh, sorry. What I mean by a back and forth is, so a work session, we would just sit and we would be asking questions, you know, throughout that, but why don't we extend the invitation to Mr. Breen, and maybe the city manager can take the lead on that, and we can put it under your name to invite him at our next earliest council meeting that he can attend.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Moreau, you don't have any miscellaneous?
No.
No.
I just want to go to the bathroom.
Okay. Well, with that, we are not yet adjourning, we are adjourning to a continuation of a non-public, and with that, we'll say goodnight, Portsmouth. And I think we need a roll call vote to, to enter, re-enter non-public?
No, Your Honor, I think you're all set.
Awesome.
This is a continuation.
Portsmouth, thank you very much.